I'd like to call the November 15th meeting of the Hanover Borough Council Finance Committee Workshop together. And I apologize that we ran over with our executive session. And Solicitor Schulz, would you care to comment on that?
I would. The Borough Council had an executive session tonight from 6:30 PM to about 7:05 involving legal matters regarding a code enforcement department active case update and to consult with the solicitor in connection with litigation and issues on which identifiable complaints are expected to be filed under section 708A, 4, and 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you, sir. Next then, we would come into public comment. First, in the room, and second, I guess we would call it digitally, please. First would be Audrey Coppersmith.
Audrey Coppersmith, 412 O Sage Drive. It looks like we have a full agenda ahead of us, and there's a couple of issues I want to speak to. One, I see that J.A. Myers has granted the borough an extension out until March 27th. Just a quick update on that, I guess, was two weeks ago, there was about 23 of us that were here in attendance for a planning commission meeting. And unfortunately, at that meeting, it was supposed to be an updated plan as to the CT5. And in fact, it was not an updated plan whatsoever. It was back and forth as far as what was being discussed and so forth. And then the two presenters actually left the room and sat outside for the entire time instead of addressing any one of the public. And we had disabled people here. We had, like I said, between, it was 23 of us, between the single-family homes, our development, which is very much impacted by it, the single-family homes were impacted. And it was basically very disingenuous that here we came to a planning commission meeting and did not get any kind of updates. And it was asked that, you know, maybe they applied for an extension to not meet, because since they couldn't meet the December 27th deadline. But at what point do we say enough is enough? This has gone on for over a year. It just keeps being pushed out, pushed out, pushed out. And when the people that are supposed to come and present information that affects, definitely affects the community greatly for a long time to come, they don't even want to address the concerned citizens, and that's not okay. So at what point, you know, does it become an issue where the borough says, hey, either put up or shut up at this point? I know legally they have to extend and so forth, but when you keep running up against deadlines and every time, you know, things don't get resolved or nobody gets information. I know at the last council meeting, I was told our questions would be answered. Well, in fact, we didn't get any of our questions answered. They weren't even addressed. So that's my first issue. My second one has to do with underwater resources. It seems that this has come up a couple of times where we've added additional developments, and now it looks like the borough residents are going to be faced with mandatory nonessential water restrictions. So why is it that we continue to add developments to the infrastructure that isn't able to handle all of that? And then the borough residents are the ones that are actually dealing with the restrictions and the increases in cost for next year with taxes, water, sewer, and garbage. So it just seems like the citizens are the ones that are bearing the brunt. And we know you guys are working hard, but, you know, it is very concerning that some of these things just keep falling back onto the citizens of the borough. Thank you.
Okay, next, Paul Anklehart, please. No?
I'll speak later on when we get into this landlord or this...
At the second section?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Holt.
Thank you, sir. Robert Holt, Box 1131, I'm in the third room. Thank you. I was going to ask you to reconsider before you vote on the budget tonight. I think it's a classic example of what a politician in DC said was never let a crisis go to waste in that you talk about having a deficit, having budget overruns, and issues, bonds, but you continue to spend, you're hiring more staff. Was it really made clear to the public you're hiring a new recreation and parks director? There's been some other hirings. I'm bewildered by the fact that it's not really clear what the borough's hiring policy is and how you get to these decisions. I also think, again, I will hold up for you and highlight, you raised a lot of rates on the average residential taxpayer, but then some of the other rates, you didn't raise at all, any of the fees. One of them is rental fees to use the library, which is one of the big boondoggles in this town in terms of finances. I don't be pardoned down that. But the other thing I want to talk about is the COVID-19 crisis is far past us now. I don't see a need, as maybe there was at one time, for open containers out on the borough streets at eating establishments. And I can't foresee any reason how that can be encouraged any longer. At a recent meeting, there was a discussion about, well, there hadn't been any problems, and maybe there was a convenience store which was more of a problem. Well, I looked in the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board records about the local establishments that have been having some infractions and problems. It's not the local convenience store. But, so before you make a decision about some kind of a permanent open container law for around Center Square, that you would really look at that and consider what you're doing. What kind of quality of life do you want to create? And I would also ask that if you are going to have that kind of discussion and have that kind of vote, there should be a borough-wide public referendum on it. And if that requires a petition, well, I'm willing to go for that. It's not been passionate or personal up to this point, but the passion is strained on this issue. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Wendy Beckner, please.
I just have a question on how our code officers are conducting business? Because I got a notice of violation in the mail, and none of it is my property. The code enforcement have to check property lines. I had a small 1,000 BTU air conditioner on my side porch. I got nailed for it. Behind my house, I have a three-car garage, which is South Railroad Street between Pleasant and West Hanover. People don't, TVs there after they take out what they need, and I got violated for one TV behind my garage. Where my property is, the reason I'm not giving my address is because of where I live. And what I'm finding behind my garage is the boxing strips and needles. And I'm getting violated for a 5,000 BTU air conditioner that is back that you can't see and a TV behind my house. Chris was at my property a while back because of the dumping that's going on. And where the problem lies is East Hanover Street between Baltimore and McAllister, they have no trash pickup in the front. So their trash has to come to the back, which blocks my garage doors. And it's just piled there, the neighbors across the alley. My question is, why wasn't the code officer, why didn't he come to me? Because my trash gets picked up out back, but my neighbor's trash at 107 gets picked up out front. And all their cans are there overflowing, and I believe the code officer was looking at that because it says on here about maintaining a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. How is our code officers working on this? Yes, my neighborhood is an issue. Believe me, it is. But my landlord and I keep my property up. We put a new fence up just to make sure nobody came in. Because South Railroad Street and McAllister, there's a lot of activity that we really need to be concerned about in our borough, especially in the 5th Ward. What I see going on, and then I get this violation in the mail for a 5,000 BTU air conditioner that I just took out of my window two weeks before, but wanted to clean up before I put it in my garage. But instead, I was dealing with families who are dealing with family members who have addiction problems. So I'm getting violated. I can show you the pictures of what it looked like back in June behind my garage, and none of it was mine. It's all coming from East Hanover Street, who's also connected to the two houses up for me. So I get a lot of electronics back there because they're taking the copper out of them. And I'm not getting rid of it. It's not my stuff. I'm responsible. But even the violation here is IPMC code, sanitary code, 302.1 sanitation. I had no trash. There's nothing on my front porch. I have a small air conditioner sitting back in because I have a side porch that goes to the back of my house. And driving by, you can't see it. So either somebody called on me, or our code officers are just going around nitpicking. When I got this in the mail yesterday, I was a little stressed. I'm like, I take care of my property. Why am I getting violations?
Well, Will, based on your...
So I need to, I didn't know Chris was going to be here, but Chris and I talked before.
Chris is on the spot, I can tell you.
Yeah.
And we'll ask Chris to have himself or one of his staff to come out and rectify or reconcile the situation.
Right. And I think maybe we should send out letters or maybe in the merchandiser about recycling again, because I see a lot of it around my neighborhood.
Well, we have a borough newsletter now going out to everyone.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, I just wanted to know if the code officers need to check property lines before they send out violations to people that's not even causing this unsanitary condition? Because I know where it's coming from, probably, but I don't know because I called Dominic and he didn't answer. So I'll try to call him tomorrow. I'd like him to come out and show me.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, and thank you for attending. Next is Mr. Isaac Riston.
Evening. My name is Isaac Riston. That's I-S-A-C-R-I-S-T-O-N, homeowner at 36 West Hanover Street. You've heard me talk about the rental inspection ordinance before, but this isn't about me. It's about the public safety of our borough. You've heard it said before that such a proposal is illegal. This is not true. There has been 70 years of precedent here in Pennsylvania, and other burrows in Southern York County have similar measures. You've heard it said before that this project is bad for landlords and property owners. The fact is that this is about protecting the properties of landowners and their neighbors. And this is about the safety of our first responders by preemptively creating a culture of prevention. This is about the public safety of the health and welfare of our borough and the protection of property and property values. I'm asking the council to listen to the presentation that our first responders are offering and what they are requesting from this community. Their concern is for public safety. We hear a lot of pleasantries about supporting our first responders. Tonight, they are asking for something. I'm asking that you seriously consider it and do the right thing. Some might say that landowners will move on because the borough takes steps to ensure the safety of those who live in this community. I'm asking that you consider that we would lose more if our first responders leave because our leadership doesn't support them. I'm asking you to prioritize our police and firemen and women over slum boards. If you support our first responders, tonight is the night to actually put those words into action. Don't do it because I'm asking for it, as I have been for almost a year now, coming this Tuesday. Do it because the people you respect and whom you entrust with our public safety are asking for it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further public comment? Do we have any online comment, please?
If you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address counsel.
Okay. I guess that's good. That'll end our public comment, and I'd like to move into item three, York County Wi-Fi Initiative.
They're not here this evening. The presenter fell ill today. He will come on next Tuesday.
Oh, all right. Then item four, the consent agenda. We have items A through F.
Scott, can we take individual...
Yes, you most certainly can.
From C, I mean, I don't mind A and B, but I'd like to take each of the others separately, please.
Certainly. Please denote the ones that you would like to pull out, please.
The ones that I'd like to bring to the surface more so is C, D, E, and F.
Or discuss separately, yes.
And then when we go on to five.
We're just on four, right?
Those aren't consent agenda items.
We're on four.
Those aren't consent agenda items.
Okay.
All right. Darlene, we're on four, A through F.
Yeah, four, okay. Stay on four. Yeah, C, D, E, and F.
She wants to pull out C.
So you would like to pull out which?
C, D, E, and F.
Yeah, and do that separately. Each one separately.
C, D, E, and F. Okay. So then I guess I'm asking for a motion to approve item A, items A and B in the consent agenda for...
No motion.
Seconded.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So then we have, let's go through item C, D, E, and F. Item C is approve the request for sewer credits for Martha Lamore at 218 Centining Avenue.
Motion.
No motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item D, hiring a police officer vacancies, direct to civil service commission to provide a certified hiring list from the current eligibility list. Those in favor?
Motion.
We need a motion, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Okay. We've got a motion from second.
Second.
All right. Are there any discussion on that?
Why are we doing that?
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I don't know. What are you doing?
I'm sorry. I'm going through with the request. I'm sorry. Item E, joint eligibility for the list for the joint, or for the firefighter vacancies.
Motion. Second.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
Yes. Am I to understand that Tony's here? We need firefighters, and is there, I was reading on the grant that we would be going after a grant. Am I connecting this correctly?
This is if they have to counsel direct civil service and so I can give a test to create a list.
Just the eligibility list, nothing else?
Just to make it eligible.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Okay.
Okay, so...
Motion on the floor.
Motion's on the floor. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Market House, approve the Salvation Army request for bell ringers. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to, you get the motion.
I don't know if you got the motion.
I did not.
Okay, you need a motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Pardon me. All right. We have a second?
Yeah.
And a second? Any discussion?
Pretty shady.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Seems motion carries. Thank you. Item five, finance personnel administration. Item A, 2024 budget to approve the advertisement of the 2024 budget.
No motion on that one.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
It's just been enacted.
What?
I'm sorry, Bill?
No, no, I'm talking to the, in the back.
Is it required? Jim? Is it required, Jim?
No, the presentation.
Is it required?
I don't know. It's normally the reading in November of the budget.
You have to advertise.
Are you reading it next week?
They passed the motion to advertise it.
Just advertising.
Oh, it is.
Share it first. Yep, okay.
So we're good? So Jim, you're off the hook.
Well done, Jim.
Well, not really.
All right, 5B, expiring commission and board terms to approve the advertisement of expiring commission and board positions for interview on December 20.
Same with, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
One.
Barbara?
I would just remind those that are going to interview that we did, I don't know if we passed an ordinance or regulation, that we will look at new people and diversity when we look to fulfill some expired terms, not continually take the same old people. I don't mean old, but same people. Sorry, I didn't mean old. I didn't mean that. I just meant same people. Sorry.
Okay.
Sewage enforcement officer, two years Douglas Stanbach, reappoint.
Hello?
Sorry, I don't know how to do it. I do not know how to do it.
Oh, my God, it's taken over. I'm just glad it's not me.
Can you turn it down? Can you turn it down?
Just turn the volume down.
Motion carried.
It's reading the news.
I don't know what I pushed.
Okay. I apologize. My bad.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Rebecca, B.
Well, we covered B, I believe. We have a...
Motion is second.
Those in favor for B?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, B carries. Item C, the 250th anniversary resolution. Motion to approve that?
Motion.
Seconded.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, the LSA grant...
How about D?
D. It's D.
Oh, I'm sorry, D. The Mass Information Notice, Notification Services Contract. Those in favor?
A motion.
I have a motion.
All right, need a motion? Aye?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Yeah.
We have a second?
Yeah.
All right.
I first.
Oh, you first, and I'll second it. Is that going to be okay?
Let's move this.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item E, now we're to the LSA grant for community council room upgrade at 33 Frederick.
I'm going to make a motion on that.
Second.
Thank you.
And there's no matching grants, right, Margie?
It says no match.
That requires no match.
It says grant requires no match.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Can't beat that, huh?
Nope, can't beat that.
All right.
Could maybe someone quickly explain that for the visitors here, so they see we are trying to save money by getting grants?
Absolutely.
Will you, Eric, please? Can someone second?
I believe it was...
Tim, I believe.
Mr. Bass.
Mr. Chris.
So just real quickly, so the LSA grant is local shares account money, which is your gambling money. And so each municipality is able to submit applications to get certain public and community facilities. So what you guys are doing by moving this forward is saying that you would like to get some share of that money for yourselves for the purposes of building a better community and council chambers at the new 33 facility that you're building, renovating.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No. Thank you for the clarification very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item F, annual allocation for Main Street Hanover, approve the advertisement of the ordinance for the funding amount.
I'm going to make a motion on that.
Second.
Okay, you're going to motion, you're going to...
I made the motion.
Supporting it. Okay? And we have a second from...
Right. And he seconded. Who seconded? You did, Chuck? Chuck did.
Is there an amount that you're...
I'm not for it, that's what...
I don't know, there's not an amount that's on here.
Scott, hold on here.
Item F.
In order to bring it to the front, don't we have to make a motion and then second and then discuss it and then vote on it?
That is, that is correct. I guess the question I would have is, what is the amount?
The amount that's been requested in the paperwork in your packet is $50,000. It's an increase of 25% over last year.
Right, right.
So it's going from 40 to 50.
$10,000. Yep. $10,000, right. But 25% over last year, yes. $10,000.
And I have a problem with it, Scott, because I'm going, I brought it to the surface to get it on to the table, to get it on to this agenda. But I just feel that we have a police officer that we have to hire, we have a fire department, we have priorities, and they, I thought by now they would be basically self-supporting, and they're not. And I can't see taking the taxpayer $10,000 more and putting it to Main Street when we could take that $10,000 and apply it to higher priorities that we're facing. And we're already going to be in, really, we're working in the hole.
Okay, but so Mrs. Funk, so you are not in favor of it?
I'm not in favor of it. I'm just trying to explain why I'm not in favor of it, which I want you to hear.
That's okay, but it's, the way, the way it's presented here, Margie and Solicitor Schulz, please help me here. It's presented as it's asking for 50 up from 40.
Yeah.
Is that, is that correct?
We're going from 40, see, I thought originally it was 30 going to 40. That was bad enough, but now we're heading on to 50,000.
Okay, so...
We're not approving the salary. All we're doing is approving the advertisement of the ordinance. We can vote on the salary later.
No.
No, this is an absolute amount of money. Because the employees, not ours.
And it's not a salary. Let's be clear. It's funding for the organization. It is not a salary for any individual.
But that's part of the ordinance.
Okay. It's from 40K to 50K annually.
We're not approving the salary. All we're doing is approving the advertisement of the ordinance. We can vote on the salary later.
No.
No.
It's included.
This is an absolute amount of money because the employee's not ours.
Oh, okay.
And it's not a salary. Let's be clear. It's funding for the organization. It is not a salary for any individual.
But that's part of the ordinance.
Okay, it's from 40K.
Okay, got it.
To 50K annually. But you're not, you're just approving the advertisement of that ordinance for the next meeting in, in December? So. Yes.
So I'm saying, I'm saying no.
You'll have a chance to vote on that.
So what's the funding amount in the motion?
Oh, okay.
What?
That's not clear to me here.
Darlene, what's the funding amount? You made the motion, Darlene. Would you like it, would you like to honor the request of 50,000? Would you like to make the motion for it to remain the same at 40,000?
I want it to, actually, I'd like to see it go down to 30,000. But at this point, since I can't do that, I'm saying I would prefer it remain exactly as it is and not give $10,000 more away.
So we would remain, your proposal is remain at the 2023 amount of 40,000.
Yes, yes. I think that's a lot of money.
Well, it's.
It is. It is. And we have other priorities.
So how do we handle this? So.
Perhaps she should make a, someone should make a counter motion to entertain the amended amount, if you will. I think it needs to be advertised, so we should come forward with either the agenda proposed or Counselor Phonk's proposal, which is to keep it as is. But you have a motion and a second. You need to now.
But.
Get a motion and a second to pull back.
Well, here's the thing. We have a, we have a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance for a funding amount. That funding amount was not stated in the motion, so.
Right.
So.
So what do we do?
Clarify it.
Yeah, so we're going to amend the motion to add the amount, so.
Of what? Another 10,000?
Well, it's, it's, as I understand it, it's stated in the ordinance, 50,000. So the person who made the motion, is that you, Mr. Heggberg?
Yeah.
No, you did.
No, I did. And Chuck seconded. I just wanted to get it on so we could discuss.
Right, so, so you don't want to amend, you want to amend your, your motion to include a number.
Oh, to include a number?
Yep.
But I can keep the number the same, correct?
You can make a motion for whatever number you'd like.
Okay, then I am, you don't want that. You really don't want me to say anything. Okay, then I amend, no, I want it to remain the same at 40,000. Does that work?
So you're making a motion to amend your motion to the funding amount of 40,000. Is there a second to that?
Yes. Yeah.
Can we have a second to the 40K?
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion on that. Any discussion on the 40K?
I would just remind counsel what Main Street does for the community and what they have done for us in terms of advertising our community, getting our community on the map so that people come here. And I think they do provide a good service. I really think so. And I think they get some money from somewhere else, too. They don't get our money from us.
No.
They get money from somewhere else. I don't know. Maybe from their fundraising, maybe from the chamber. I don't know.
The county.
But there, I think there are two people that work there now who work on it.
There is. There is. But I think what I want, and when I, when I'm asking for that, is that I want to know where the rest of the money, the $100,000, where all this comes into play. I would like to have a printout of the money that they're taking in because there are CO1, 3.
501C.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I, as a council member, want to see in regards to the people that I represent in Ward 5, how much money they take in and where that money comes from. And how much, and we are, they're obligated to give us how much they make wage-wise.
We've got that.
They are not, okay, but they're.
A nonprofit that does the 990, so they have to file taxes. You can go online and look at it.
I want it brought to the table. I want a paper. I want to see it.
I don't think that's too much to ask.
No, I think everybody's entitled to see what their tax dollars are paying for. And I know that they brought in over $100,000 last year. And when I go by and I start asking the business owners of the town, what percentage of this money are you getting? Apparently, they're getting a spot on the computer where they can advertise their business, but I don't see them getting money.
I think it might be in the chamber.
You know what? It looks good on paper. We have all the big words. But I want, I want to know how much money they're bringing in and where it's going.
On this, we, we have a vote, I believe, for $40,000? We have a motion to approve the advertisement of the ordinance setting the funding amount for Main Street Hanover at $40,000.
Okay. Brian's second.
We have, we have a motion for that.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed to that?
Aye. I'm opposed.
One, two, three.
Is that Chuck and Barb?
Yes.
Thank you.
So what's that bring the score to?
Well, we have a total of eight people, so there was two opposed, so there's six in favor.
Okay, so the motion carries at 40,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, item G, 2024 org chart to approve the personnel changes including in the budget. Item 1 and item 2.
I'll make a motion.
I second it. I second.
Second? Any discussion on that? All right. Those in favor? All right, aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. That was easy, Amy.
Yep.
I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but. All right, item 6, public safety, rental registration and inspection, the survey distribution.
So motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think we should explain what that survey distribution is.
I'm sorry, Barb.
Shouldn't we explain what that survey, aren't we going to have a presentation?
Yes. You guys.
Okay.
We had a presentation at the public safety meeting. We wanted them to come to do it here.
They're prepared.
Okay.
Please come on.
If I could, Mr. Rollin, these folks did a really amazing presentation on public safety committee meeting. The public safety committee thought that they should also make a presentation to the rest of the council members.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come make this presentation to you this evening concerning the rental registration. I'm sorry, Lieutenant, did you say this? Soon she hits slideshow. You hit slideshow.
Hit slideshow.
Hit the slideshow icon.
Does it transitions? Slideshow.
Down the lower right corner.
Lower right?
There's a little screen with a stick under it, with a T under it. Right there. Thank you.
Okay. It's in slideshow.
It's basically the same presentation that we presented to the public safety committee. This is data-driven presentation. The data in this report is based on involved departments' research conducted individually on statistics from current records and the management systems in which we have available to us. The data in the report reflects calls for service, investigations, complaints, and actual incidents. The assumptions are made that all actions are within applicable ordinances, statutes, and laws that are afforded to us to enforce as your public safety entities within the Borough of Hanover. No opinion, inference, or judgment should be formed, passed, or provided on or against the residents or involved persons in reports or complaints related to these statistics and/or findings. All of your public safety entities that are being represented here this evening do not discriminate. We respond accordingly. When we receive calls that need investigated or responded to, we do so. So what is part of the problem? Borough Hanover is lacking an updated current registry of rental properties. The Borough has no control over tracking those persons responsible for property management of the current rental properties. Borough of Hanover does not have a mechanism to place direct rental property inspections, I'm sorry, to place direct rental property inspections for health and safety issues. The current ordinance in which we have in the Borough does not have, we don't, we don't have an ordinance that actually require a registry of the rental pro, sorry, we do have an ordinance that requires the registration of a rental property. However, it is somewhat lacking. The point of contact for this registry is the Borough Secretary, not the Code Enforcement Division. The proposed ordinance contains a requirement for the rental property owner to name a specific party, okay, that in a manager or a caretaker position if the owner resides more than 50 miles outside of the borough. We don't have anything like that. We have property owners that reside in Hawaii, Maryland, Virginia, Las Vegas. We have a lot of, of property owners that are outside the Borough of Hanover and by much more than 50 miles. The proposed ordinance benefits would be searchable and shareable databases of rental properties. It'll be accessible by codes, fire, and the police department. It will clearly define property manager and the caretaker when applicable. Who can we call at 2:00 in the morning when we have a pipe break? Could reduce or limit the impact of emergencies, electric, water shut-off, so on and so forth. We explained to the, to the Public Safety Commission that if we have a small fire in an apartment building, if we had somebody who we could call that was responsible and have a maintenance person respond, we very well might be able to isolate electric or some plumbing issues, gas issues, that sort of thing, and keep folks in the other two apartments. We have a three-unit apartment building. One has been damaged. As it stands right now, if we can't get ahold of anybody, we're not able to split those utilities up or we're not able to perform the duty safely, we have to condemn all three of the apartments and everybody would be put out. The ordinance would also give us control of the registry and enforcement. The ordinance clearly falls under the Codes Division, where it belongs, not being reported to the Borough Secretary. We would then take this information and upload it into our database. That database then again would be shared with all public safety disciplines within Hanover. So what are some potential hazards and impacts? Higher frequency of calls, calls for service, both codes, police, and fire EMS, at rental properties versus owner occupied. It equals increased risk. Not only risk for the public, but risk for your responders. Higher frequency of calls, location with higher instances known, structural health, and/or other physical problems, again, increased risk. Higher frequency of calls. Higher frequency of calls, these specific types and locations increase risk of injury, resulting in higher probability of injury carries over to visitors, residents, and government employees. So what are some of the most frequent calls that we are experiencing to date? Water shut-offs and in unsanitary conditions, graffiti issues, abandoned or hazardous vehicles, weeds and grass issues, rubbish, garbage, and exterior violations, sanitation on the interior of the properties, fire damage, electrical and plumbing hazards, inoperable or non-existent heat sources, infestations, structural issues both interior and exterior of the properties, inoperable, faulty, missing, smoke, or carbon monoxide detectors, life safety issues and/or lack of egress and ingress, and multiple violations. Multiple violations would consist of any number of the violations and more that would be listed in the Property Maintenance Code, which has been adopted by the Borough. Additional calls that we receive or exterior property and building violations, work performed without proper permits, stairways, decks, and porches, roofs and drainage, and accessory structure issues, garages, sheds, that sort of thing. So what are some summary of the calls year-to-date? Calls and complaints to non-owner occupied rental units are 515, or about 58% of our calls in the Code Division. Calls or complaints to owner occupied or other is 375, calls are about 42%. And total calls or complaints as of the 6th of November, 2023, were 890. There are other municipalities similar in size and population that have a registry and inspection program that is working. Some of those are listed here. Carlisle Borough, Penn Township, Camp Hill Borough, the City of York, and the City of Lebanon. Although these differ somewhat in, in the hierarchy of controls, or maybe the frequency, so on and so forth, they're all there for one common goal. To be proactive for life safety issues and to make sure that we're holding accountable the folks that are in violation and to try to reduce the amount of calls that you're seeing on your public safety personnel.
Good evening. The Police Department was asked to break down some different sets of data regarding to rental properties and the impact of rental properties and their relationship to calls within the Borough. Specifically, the first thing we looked at was a press release from Tuesday, October 10th regarding drug arrests in Hanover, which was titled that there were 37 drug arrests, or specified there were 37 drug arrests. 16 of the 37 arrests, the offenders lived in the Borough or had connection to a property in the Borough. Of those 16, 15 were living in rented properties. One address given is undetermined. And lastly, of the 16 arrests, eight search warrants were served on the properties. All were rentals. Additionally, I researched five UCR codes. UCR codes are Uniform Crime Reporting Codes that we use to track data for certain types of calls. I chose five UCR codes where we have our highest rate of frequency and also a relationship to arrests and potential for violence. The first were 3600 code, domestic. The second was 2450, or harassment. And the third was medical, but I specifically looked for overdose cases. Also, to note to counsel, when researching these cases, I conducted a reverse chronology lookback for 10 cases, but those cases had to occur at a residential structure. They could not be commercial, couldn't be a hotel, open area park, et cetera. Of the 10 domestic cases, nine were at rental properties. One was at a private residence. Of the 10 harassment cases, seven were rental properties. Three were owner occupied or private residence. And of the 10 cases for overdose, nine were rental properties. One was owner occupied. Moving on and conducting the same research for assaults, and the lowest, or I would say the low-hanging fruit of assaults, the easiest one for me to research is assaults, atrocious hands, fists, feet, and disturbance. Of those assaults, nine, of those 10 assaults, rather, nine were rental properties. One was a private residence or owner occupied. And disturbance cases, of those 10 cases, nine were rental properties and one was a private residence. So a few years ago, I made this presentation.
So, a few years ago, I made this presentation, and I've updated it. I've conducted a seven-year analysis of fire loss throughout the borough and divided it between owner occupied and rental units. The dates listed that are highlighted in green are rental properties. So I believe this is 2017, and if you look at the dollar loss in the bottom square there, you'll see that, I think it's 80%, where fire loss was in residential rental properties. In 2018, 90 -- it looks like 96%. In 18, 92%. In '20, 85%. '21, 100% of our fire loss were all in rental properties. And year-to-date, all of our residential fires -- actually, that's incorrect, I'm missing one.
That's 22.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's 22. That's the second part of 22, I'm sorry. And there's 23. So right now, we're at 36% in 2023 of our fire loss being in rental properties. So our total fire loss over the seven-year analysis has been 80% in our residential rental This just highlights that there were 10 fires, seven were rental properties in 2017. In '18, we had eight fires, six were in rental properties. '19, we had three fires, and all three of those were in rental properties. And I want to preface that when I say three fires, they were major incident fires where people were displaced or property was lost, not just unattended cooking and things like that. So in '27 of the 10 were rental, seven out of seven in '21, three of three in '22, and three of six in '23. I'm going to show you some pictures, and I apologize that you probably can't make out a whole lot, but the top picture and the bottom picture, both here, are from the same fire. One is the front bedroom, and the other one is the rear bedroom. This occurred close to downtown and was a mother and two teenagers that lived there. And the result of that fire was an electrical fire. There was two outlets in the front bedroom there and multiple extension cords to run an air conditioner, fans, other miscellaneous items that a teenager would have in her bedroom. The occupants are still not back in to this day, I do not believe. This is not a -- this apartment was not on fire. The apartment adjacent to it was, but we had to access this apartment to get into the bathroom because the bathrooms met and the fire actually broke through into his bathroom or into their bathroom, I should say. Those are the conditions that we met with, and to the citizen that spoke earlier about the needles, there was lots of needles in that particular apartment. The next two photos were from a rental unit in a basement. The top picture is a bed. So there's a bedroom down there in an illegal basement or illegal bedroom in a basement with no way out of the basement. Again, an electrical fire and overloaded circuits that had old knob and tube wiring in it. This was another apartment building in which a small fire started, and because the person was home and started to smell smoke. So the bottom picture is a fire in the corner, multiple extension cords, power strips being in use, the power heaters, and a couple other small items. Again, a cord was probably pinched based on what we found in the debris. Here's an apartment, second-floor apartment that has stairs. Underneath, you can see a lot of debris that someone lit, and it fell down into the stairwell of the basement. I do not recall if there was an apartment in the basement or not. Suffice to say, had that fire grown and there were people home on the second floor, that was their only way out. This is a fire in a larger apartment building in town here. The fire started on the first floor and the ceiling. There are units above where people were living. Building is not sprinklered, and it was a short and electrical service cable, so the arcing was very hot and initiated the fire, which spread very rapidly. Another fire, this one right downtown, second floor, one outlet in the bedroom with TV, air conditioner, five or six cellphone chargers plugged into it. We found cords all throughout that bedroom. Here is a duplex in town where the top picture shows the front porch, and right beside that firefighter, that's a front door, a discarded cigarette. And you can see the second picture is the butt can. They missed it and started a fire. But while we were there, checking for extension, we found a bedroom in the attic with no exit out. This bottom picture are steps leading to the second-floor apartment. That lawnmower was stored underneath there, there's a chest freezer, and the underside of those steps are covered in plastic, a thick vinyl-type plastic to keep the rain off of it. What's missing from the picture is the gas can that I took away. Another apartment building in town, we've got a water heater right up against the electrical panels. That's a code violation because there's not clear space. The electrical panels being open is another code violation. On the outside of the building, that yellow, reverse-looking L is Romex wire, which is against code to have it on the exterior. The top picture, and there's a glare for me, but the top picture is one of the apartments, again, showing the hoarding condition. And again, attic with a bedroom up there. You can see in the right corner, there's a dresser, and in the foreground there is a double bed. This was in another apartment building. Top picture shows a breaker that was blown out on the bottom. The bottom picture is taken above that breaker. You'll see two copper wires tying breakers together to make them a 220 breaker. Again, code violation of NEC and the fire code. The rest of the pictures I've taken are just random pictures I've taken over the course of the last two years. The top picture is two splices wrapped in electrical tape in an apartment building. Again, electrical code violation. The bottom picture, there's three yellow gas lines coming up from the basement in a common hallway leading to the second floor, goes through the ceiling, and at one point it traverses a wall and is bored through the steps. Again, another violation of several codes. A bedroom in the attic. This is at the attic steps where there's an electrical cord run up to provide electric. The black item to the left of that bench where the drums are is a door that is sitting on top of that cord, which, if you're familiar with electric, pinching that wire creates heat and impedance, and that's why we have a lot of electrical fires. The bottom picture is turning around and looking the other direction, that is the bedroom in that attic. Couple other things we find, top, electric battery, electric smoke detector with battery backup disconnected, probably by the tenant, not by the landlord. The fire code is very specific now. When we adopted the 2015 code, I and the property maintenance code is as well, that Chris enforces, I can cite the person responsible for the violation, not the building owner. So if you own a building and you put in brand-new smoke detectors, and then six months later I come out and they're missing, and the tenant says they took them down, they get the violation. They get the notice of violation, not the -- now, the building owner will be notified that it occurred, because I think that's only right, that the building owner knows what's going on. So the bottom picture is a duplex where we had a basement fire, and it's hard to see in the picture, but the hoarding conditions on the outside, I believe this was before Chris's time.
Was my first week here.
And again, looking at backyard from the house. So we're trying to navigate hose lines through that area, throw ladders in the back, and it's almost impossible to get around. Bottom picture is a picture from a kitchen of one of the other apartments that I've already showed you, and that's a stove in the foreground, and to the left of that is a wooden wicker dressing, one of those things that you put up to skip behind to change And the top picture, when I moved it out of the way, is hiding the water heater. And the bottom picture, again, just walking in an apartment, there's a light fixture hanging by the wires, another code violation. The top picture shows a tire in the living room of a rental unit. The bottom picture shows an electrical outlet that I pulled from the wall in front of that box, and it's difficult to see, but it's a congealed mess of electric, USB-type plug-in charger, you plug your cellphone in. If you're buying them at Sheetz, please don't do that. Here's a property where the top picture shows a Billcode door where a discarded cigarette landed, and the tenant swore up and down that they did not smoke. And when I walked out front, that's the front flowerbed, and all those little white things are cigarette butts. Apartment, second-floor apartment. On the top of the photo, there's an electrical outlet. In the foreground of that photo, you'll see a white outlet box that is a wire mold box that was attached to that outlet, and then it was run all the way around the room, both directions, and behind the dresser was an AC unit plugged in plus additional items that were plugged in on the other side. So that one outlet was made into four and used, and the picture, if I had the other picture, I could show you where it just shows how the wire sat and heated and heated and slowly turned the wood and heated it up, and we ended up with a fire in the wall. So, in closing for my part, I don't think that I could do any better than Mr. Riston did in his opening comments. We are a united front as your staff. You've entrusted us to enforce laws, codes. I've got 30 firefighters that I've got to make sure are safe, and some of these conditions, I can't do that. And I know it's a tough decision, but I'm asking for your consideration for the safety of your staff, my staff, and the safety of our citizens. Thank you. So all of us would like to thank counsel for allowing us to present this to you this evening. We're asking, I'm asking, move the survey forward, use the mailings and the things that we have in front of us to get that out there and to get the word out. We will help put the word out as well. If you would so, if counsel so chooses to mail that survey to every resident, there will be additional cost to that, and it is significant. But as it stands now, we do have avenues, ways we can make this work to get the survey out that we've already paid for. We're asking for your support. Again, we appreciate it. I apologize for struggling in the beginning. There is a really bad glare on that TV. It's harder for me to see that one when we were doing the presentation, but please consider moving the survey forward and moving the ordinance forward. Thank you very much.
If I may, Scott, may I ask Margie if she would review how we're going to send that out?
We talked about that. I don't want to misspeak.
No, that's fine.
You probably know the right answer.
So, as you know, the survey's been developed. The company that developed the survey, we've also already paid for the digestion of the material so that you get a clear picture of what the citizenry would like to see. How we can distribute the survey is through our mailings. Every citizen gets a newsletter, and they will be getting one at the beginning of the year. There's one that will be out in your mailbox is December 1st-ish, so it would go into the next one. We also do a lot of other mailings. Everyone gets a bill. There could be a QR code added to your bills so that each person that gets a bill could use the QR code to respond to the survey. We'll have information here, we'll have information at the library so that we can help those of you that do not have a computer. So this would all be no mailed-out survey and no mailed response to us. If we were interested in doing that, that would be an additional $13,000 that we have not paid for.
How much?
$13,000 approximately.
Before we did this, didn't we have this all situated on the survey that if people didn't, if they mailed it in, the response, we would pay, we would pay the postage?
Yeah.
And for those who didn't and wanted to go the route of computer or had computers, they could go on computer and do that.
We developed it without it getting mailed. In several of our meetings and conversations, the Public Safety Committee wanted to see it mailed to every citizen. I haven't gotten the support that I'm comfortable spending another $13,000.
So am I.
We spent $9,000 already.
Yeah.
So if--
On the development of the survey.
Correct.
Yes.
And like I said, the digestion of that material, so when it's returned. So, you know, at this point, we have the means to get it out there. We'll help anyone that calls in. We will get it advertised everywhere that we can, and we will hopefully get a good turnaround in response without spending that additional money.
Thank you, Margie.
Thank you. I think we have the resources to be able to do it without spending additional money.
I agree.
Yeah. So I guess I'll make that motion to--
Yep.
Thank you. I'll make that motion. Thank you very much, Tim.
Very good.
Okay. I didn't mean to miss something, so--
I made the motion and Tim--
Distribute the survey.
Distribute the survey.
And so we have a motion to move forward and a second. All right?
And that would be without mailings?
No, that's with mailing.
No.
Oh, it's not with mailing?
It would also--
Not an individual mailing.
Now, wait a minute. I know that. And $13,000 to me, to protect the people of the town, is worth it, okay?
I think that there's enough mechanisms, and the people can come to the library if they want to do paper.
No, you have to give everybody an equal opportunity.
They are getting equal opportunity, and this is not a census survey.
The motion on the floor is without them spending the money.
Is it going out through the mailing in December?
Would you restate, what is the motion?
The motion on the floor is without spending the money. It's just to distribute the surveys the best way we can through our mailings and through the library and through paper copies.
So no further--
Yeah.
No additional money.
--on postage, etc.
Further money.
To clarify for Darlene, the mailing that Margie is talking about is a separate individual mailing.
I know that, and that's going out to everybody in the community.
No, it's--
Not according to the motion.
--as part of the newsletter or other means of mailings that we already do, not a brand-new separate mailing.
Correct.
She doesn't want to spend $10,000.
So no, it's not getting it separate, $13,000.
No, 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 no. Okay, but Margie said she wouldn't be uncomfortable to do it that way, but it--
She is uncomfortable.
You are uncomfortable with that.
Let me bring this under control. Barb, would you restate the motion that you made, please?
I made the motion to send the-- I made the motion to send, to approve sending the survey out through the means we have available without spending $13,000.
Okay. So whatever electronics means that has essentially no incremental cost?
No additional cost.
No additional to the $10,000.
Okay. So that's the motions on the floor, and we have a second on that from Mr. Kress. Okay, so...
Repeat, repeat very plainly what we're doing here.
Sending the survey out.
You want to send it out through the normal means that we're going to do in December.
Yeah, like through newsletters and the QR code.
Right, and so it automatically goes out with that.
Right.
That's correct.
Now, do they pay the postage to send it back to the borough? Or are we going to somehow put postage on that, that they can return it to us?
They will be filling it out electronically. We will have hard copies available for anyone here at the borough office, borough chambers, and at the library for anyone that would like to fill out a hard copy.
So that's...
Oh, so you're not sending the copies out along with the normal mailing?
Correct.
I don't like that.
It would...
Well, okay, but we have a motion on the floor and a second for that. And those in favor for the process that's been motioned and seconded, those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me.
I'm opposed. I'm opposed also.
Okay, so Brian's opposed?
No. Ed and Darlene.
Ed and Darlene are opposed.
Correct.
Okay, so we have...
No, no, no. The only reason I'm opposed, I want everyone to get a copy or... Okay, Margie, if they contact you...
Yes.
That they need a copy sent to them.
Darlene, we're...
I need to have this answered, Scott, okay? You're saying they can apply or call you at the borough and have you send them out a copy so that they can fill it and send it back to you?
They can pick one up, and I believe the people that we think would have a need, come in here and pay their bill every month anyway, they can pick one up.
There you go.
You would do it? You would, you would send it out to them?
I will hand it to them.
What do you mean, you will hand it to them?
When they come into the building, I will hand it.
What if they, what if they don't have the means to come to the office and that they have a problem with movement or motivation? How do you do that?
I have a suggestion.
Okay, good.
Can you...
Please, go ahead, but we need to bring this to a close.
Yeah. So what I was, what I can suggest is that the paper copies are available to all of the borough council members, and so if anyone in your ward would like a physical copy, they can contact their council members and request a physical copy.
Okay, so we do, I have a copy of it?
We will provide you with copies.
Good.
Okay, and then, okay, and then you're going to...
So if you have someone in your ward who is unable to do it electronically or unable to come here to the borough office to pick up a copy, you can hand deliver one to them.
Thank you, Amy. I like that.
Good idea.
Okay. So, so now we have a motion and a second, and we have six in favor and two against.
No, I'm not against it now.
Okay, so we have seven in favor and one against, so motion carries.
I have a question, if it's okay. And this is to our first responders, and I think you guys know that I support you 100% in everything you do, and thank you for your service. But one, I just have a simple question. You know, I don't always ask a lot of questions. If we were to have a rental inspection, let's just say that happened, who is responsible for enforcing it, and do we currently have the manpower to do so? A big question of mine is always, do you guys have the manpower to do what you need to do?
We're going to decide that.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
We're going to, it's our...
We don't even have it yet. We don't have a registration.
Categorically, before you address it, we pass the governing doctrine, which is the ordinance.
Well, of course. My question to them is, do they feel, this is just their personal...
They might tell us they need something.
Okay. I'm not saying that this is what it is. I just want to know directly from you guys and for everybody, can you make this happen? Do you feel it's possible, and if it's something that we should move forward on? That's where we're going to go.
Do I feel if it's possible? Yes.
And you have the manpower currently?
I want to break, I want to, if I could break it down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The very first thing that needs to be done is get a handle on the registrations and who are the responsible folks, okay? That has to be first and foremost. If you so choose to go with an inspection program, we can administer the program. The question is the manpower. We will have to obtain more manpower.
There you go.
Okay? We can start the inspections with some of the manpower that we have now, but as you saw in the statistics that were provided for you, there's over 890 calls. That doesn't include personal contacts and meeting with a contractor or somebody coming in to, you know, to speak to us at the office, you know, all the phone calls that go along with that, so on and so forth. Because if that number was put into there, we'd be over 1,100. So the answer to your question is yes. Now, inevitably, somebody's going to ask the question, is there going to be a fee? Of course, there's going to be a fee, okay? And then that's how you help to offset the program.
But I do want to interject that with the ordinance, it's been a while since everybody's looked at it, is that there's a time delay in the inspections happening to get a handle on what's going on in the borough with just where the heck are these places?
Well, the only thing right here that we're talking about are the registrations.
I know, but the question was asked, and I'm answering part of it too because I was part of this development. The other aspect is, is that it's not an annual inspection. It was, it was to be determined, but I believe it was up to a three-year cycle for the inspection. The only time that you're going to get hit with multiple inspections is if you have multiple problems and you are a problem child to have to be dealt with. So the idea of, we don't know, I mean, we don't know those conditions yet because we don't have a baseline to work off.
My question was based on their current workload that they're enduring right now. Like, is any more of a workload going to be an issue down the line? Do they feel that? It's just a simple question I was asking. Yeah.
I think it's a viable question. We're not going to not respond to the complaints as they're received.
Right.
We investigate every complaint that comes in, okay? And we respond appropriately, whether that be a notice of violation, okay, or if it's marked an unfounded complaint, whatever the case may be, we respond appropriately to every complaint. So it's a viable question.
Chris, Tony, don't we have inspection for commercial buildings right now, and they're done like every three years or so? We're still doing that with the fire department that goes out?
Are there commercial building inspections now? We're still trying to...
Right, I just want to clarify.
Okay. Are doing it and trying to get it into our rotation.
And now we want to introduce what Chris is talking about, correct?
Okay. I don't want to be rude, but we're done with this. We have, we've voted on it, and we're done, and we need to move on with the rest of the meeting.
Well, we have, Scott, we're here at Finance to take care of every question. And we motion it, and we second it, and then...
We're not going to solve every question in the world.
We can't, but the thing is, we're going to have to clarify, all I wanted to know, I know we have inspections, but they're with commercial. We don't have the residential inspections unless, Chris, you get a complaint, correct? Or you see it for yourself?
Either there's a complaint, there's a... Or if the code officer would be out, you know, on routine fight-like work, then yes, if they see something, they will write it out.
Right, and that goes through your code enforcement, but then Tony has the firemen who go out for the commercial. Are we still doing that? Are we still going to follow through it?
In fact, we've enhanced that program, but the fire department, where we're actually providing additional...
Just to clarify here, what we've approved here, as I understand it, I hope, and we need to move on here, is we have approved the rental registration...
Survey.
Survey, and nothing more.
Correct.
That's it.
Okay? And that's, and we're done on that, in my view. President Rickardi?
I would like to echo the Vice President's sentiment. Some of the things that are being discussed are very important, and they eventually...
And they're great committee issues.
Happened, but we just did step one, and look how that went. How long it took to get to step one, and now we're arguing about step 19, 42. Let it start. Let the process work, let it develop, and we will revisit this throughout.
Thank you, sir. So we're on to 6B. The Market House, approving the ordinance for no parking on Chestnut Street in front of the Market House. So moved?
Second.
You got beat out, Chuck.
He did.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. C, Fire Museum Wayfinding Signs, approve the placement.
So motion.
Okay? Second?
Sure.
All right, any discussion?
No.
No? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Seven, Public Works and Facilities, 7A Municipal Complex, refuse, approve, pardon me, the revised architectural and engineering contracts for 33 and 44 Frederick Street.
So motion.
Second.
Okay? Do we need any discussion from Mr. Maines?
It's up to council.
I don't think so.
We're all comfortable with that? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. 7B Public Works and Water Resource Facility, approve the recommendations on the Architectural Engineering Studies for 139 North Street and 228 High Street.
I'm going to so motion.
You're going to motion and a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion...
Can I ask one question, Mr. Maines?
I don't know, man. Better be quick.
I don't see him, though.
Yeah, just right there.
As part of this study, are they going to evaluate the relocation of the recycling facility at Tanger as part of the concept design because obviously you got to move it somewhere?
It has to be part of the conversation, for sure. You can't pick up and move things around without having all of the pieces of the puzzle, and that's one of the pieces.
I assume it just was never discussed at the public facilities, and it wasn't in the scope.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that it is in the scope that we're...
Yeah, if you're going to look at everything evenly, you have to look at that as well.
That's it.
And you're only using those two properties for the study?
For the study, correct.
Okay. And how best to use that, those sites?
What we are looking at is to see if they, they are an equal or better opportunity than what has been proposed at the Cougar Drive facility, which is the campus facility. But we can't compare apples to apples until we look at the other ones individually because we haven't looked at them yet.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, those in favor? We're good with that. Done.
We did it.
Item eight, 8A Stone Wick Water System, approve the dedication, release, and maintenance, release of the maintenance bond and the easement agreement. Sir?
Okay. Item 8A is for Stone Wick to release their bond, maintenance bond, and to accept it, accept it into the borough.
Okay.
So motion.
So we have a motion, a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. 8B Water Use Restrictions, review the proposed action of the borough manager. You're tough. To implement mandatory restriction of nonessential water uses, and I think I shouldn't have made light of that because I think that's important.
Eric will explain that.
So, yeah, so very simply, your borough manager is empowered to actually introduce water restrictions in the borough. If you recall some time ago, we had a conversation about voluntary trying to cut back some water usage. We're at a point in time now where we need to sort of elevate that to the next level. This is not something specific to Hanover. This is something you're seeing in a lot of communities in York County as well. And so what's being asked really is to just simply acknowledge the actions of the manager and have a discussion if there's any concerns or anything that you would like to see differently. This is, is all sort of outlined both in the PUC tariffs as well as the Borough's Emergency Response Plan, which lists drought contingency planning, and that's what's part of this.
And this would affect everyone we supply water to?
That's correct. It's all nonessential water use.
So our current potable water is four to four and a half million gallons a day?
Okay.
Consumption, correct?
Correct.
So what's our goal?
So what your goal is, is to reduce all nonessential water usage, to see if we can reduce the amount that we have to draw out of the system and put into the distribution system.
Don't take that the wrong way, but that's a, like a hug yourself, feel-good goal. What's the number?
There's not a specific number we're shooting for. We're shooting for as much as we can get. You have to understand, too, as we're talking about nonessential water usage, a lot of what's listed in there, watering of lawns, we're in a fall period right now, there isn't a lot of lawn watering going on, there's other things in there.
You get a lot of that for free.
Gardens, things like that. We recognize that we're sort of on the other side of the gardening season, but all the same, this is the normal process that this borough moves through because it's the prudent thing to do.
I think, for what it's worth, it's what, you get what you pay for here, nothing, that we should have a number, a figure, a percentage, a something. Bill, you're in the water business.
I am, and I'll jump in here, to be very clear and to move this along. This is not for council's discretion, this is, the manager is authorized by our rules of playing the game.
Absolutely.
So this is a courtesy, if you will. I think she's seeking affirmation of her decision. As far as your questions, Mr. Maines, it is, it is an altruistic goal, it is a very large goal. It is difficult for people to quantify nonessential utilization of water. It is meant to imply that think before you use and potentially waste water. We are segueing into the drier time of the year, so pool, gardening, the references that were made, all we should naturally decrease. But right now, there, there is no way, no offense, to put a, to put a goal on this particular issue. It is more a mindset of think about as you use water, please don't waste it.
And I'm with you, but I'm part of the world that you can't manage what you don't measure.
I know, I know. It's like savings. You set a goal in savings, but this is, this is just like if you're brushing your teeth, turn the water off, you know, in between starting and stopping.
While you're singing Happy Birthday. Or no, that's washing your hands.
Yes. So I'd like to make the motion to reaffirm the manager's position.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I had no intention to undermine it, I just, I'd like things with...
I saw it succinctly, so I wanted to drive the point.
So we have, we have a motion and a second. Those, any discussion further?
Yes. The only thing I want to know is, the only thing that this is in regards to is having Margie, our borough manager, at the top of this. It will come from her, correct? That's what we're talking about here.
So what comes from your action that we're, and this is not something that's going to go to next week, so again, we're going to have one discussion about this because it's the manager's ability to do this. The next step for us as staff is now to support the manager and develop an outreach program so that we can get to everybody and start to do the messaging across all of our medias, all of our platforms. We need to reach out to our partners and our other municipalities, our other, you know, public servants, and make sure they're aware of this as well. That's the only way we're going to have it effective.
That's the only thing, okay, so at this point, we're just beginning, and then we move forward, like what Scott was asking will come into play down the line, right?
By no men means I meant to mean Margie's position in that, I just wanted it, all right. So, that carries, 8B. 8C Water System Specifications, I have to say, it was eighty-something pages, and I did not read it all, yet.
Okay.
Because it was, it was a very, not a very compelling reading, but I will.
Yeah, so this borough has operated off of a sort of collection of notes and field sketches and things like that, and what we're trying to do is kind of get that all sort of unified, codified, if you will, into a single place where we can share that with those people who need to do work on our system, as well as us as staff, as we would do work on the system. We need a set of specifications that make sure everybody understands what the rules of play are. So, that's all that's being asked of you, is simply to approve the resolution that allows us to have those be the official specifications for the Borough's water system.
So moved, second.
Second.
I would like to ask, as my point of comment, that we defer this till next week, till Bill's meeting, so at least I have enough time to read the eighty-something pages of it, because I have not read it yet, and I don't like to just approve stuff that I haven't read.
It's not exciting, but I get your point.
It is.
Procedural.
You know, I mean, I don't want to put anybody in the spot, Tim, I believe you have read it, but...
No, no, it's just, sometimes you gotta trust your staff.
And I do, but I like to read stuff, I concur with that, but...
Well, you can read the bill after you vote for it.
There's a motion on the floor on a second, so...
Right, you have to vote.
Okay, so, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Just me?
Yes.
Okay, so, I lose. All right?
Still read it.
I'll still read it. Dear Lord, 9A Planning Commission, 440, 442 McKinley, approve the resolution for the primary slash final subdivision plan.
Yeah, very simply on this one, so your planning commission has recommended that you approve this plan. This plan is an existing duplex sitting on a single property, and what they're trying to do is to subdivide it into two properties, down the common wall, it's a very simplistic plan, it's already set up that way, in fact, it's already addressed that way in the mailing system and utility building systems, this just simply sort of makes it official, I guess.
So moved, second. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B Cherry Tree 5, or V?
So, what you have in front of you is the developer has granted an extension of time to the borough, if you're willing to accept that. That would move the time extension out to March 27th of next year.
If we, if we...
Motion to approve that?
If we wouldn't so allow it, then it would have to end by, before this date, correct?
Yes, but it's not that simple.
Okay.
And I will let your solicitor weigh in on this, but only preface it to say that when you have a land development plan in front of you, as much as, and sometimes to the frustration of people, you know, that it seems like it drags on, you do have an obligation to act in what's called good faith, and you do have to allow them time to address comments. Certainly, at the beginning of this plan, there was a number of zoning issues, litigation, and things like that, that have extended it out, but at this point in time, there are still a number of issues that need to be played out to one way or the other. And granting the time extension simply allows you time for that discussion. If you don't do that, then what you do is you sort of prematurely push yourself into having to deny the plan, and then there's going to be some potential issues with that.
Okay, so we have a motion? And a second, any comments on that?
Did we have a motion?
No, we didn't have a motion.
Oh, we didn't. Tim? We have a motion?
Well, no, what I'm hearing, I think, is that we necessarily don't have a leg to stand on with this, we have to extend it.
Pretty much.
If we're gonna get into a legal turmoil again, so...
Spend a lot of money and end up in the same place.
We have a lot of on that right now.
I know that, but I'm just saying.
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion further? Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10 Storm Order Authority, Articles of Incorporation Amendment, Authorization of the Advertisement of the Ordinance.
So moved.
This council, okay?
I'd like to solicit to address this. He can do it very well.
All right. So, as you recall, in 2018, Borough Council created the Hanover Borough Storm Water Authority. When it did so, it set forth its powers in its Articles of Incorporation. Those Articles of Incorporation were limited pretty much to the financing, operation, maintenance of a comprehensive stormwater management system. The Borough is consider, or Storm Water Authority and the Borough is considering a potential bio solids gasification project that would be undertaken by the authority. The Articles of Incorporation do not contain the power to the authority to do that kind of a project, so the authority has passed a resolution requesting Borough Council to approve an amendment to its Articles of Incorporation to include the power to engage in the potential bio solids gasification project. Once they pass the resolution, they bring it to Borough Council, which they have done, the next step is for council to advertise an ordinance which approves the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation. What's in front of you tonight is a motion to approve the advertisement of that ordinance. I prepared that ordinance, it's ready to go, so if it's advertised, it will be taken up by council next month. So, we have a motion, second? Mr. Rickart? Any further discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, so we have seven, one?
Put me down as an abstain.
You have to have a reason to abstain.
Because I'm actively involved in the review of the contracts.
Yeah. I remember.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heckberg. Item 11 Recreation Draft Comparks and Recreation Plan. I would like to say I read through this, for what it's worth.
That was 100 pages more than Eric's report.
114.
Well, 180 total with other information.
More exciting.
More exciting.
And thank you for that. I'll keep this brief, as we've had many discussions on this, it's a very robust plan, and I would say value-laden.
Robust or verbose?
So, all right. We had some very good discussion on it this evening at Rec Board. The next steps are, as we had the council presentation last month, there were some recommendations made by council, those are being entered into this draft version, along with some recommendations made this evening at Rec Board. The next step, then, is for DCNR to approve, and then come back with those recommendations added to council, for council to approve then next month. If there are no major objections, then we give this our blessing to send to DCNR for that approval, to then come back to the borough for approval. One bonus to this is, if, when we do approve, or if we approve, we are immediately eligible for an implementation grant, so we can take one small piece out of this project, immediately apply for some grant funding, and actually move some of these things forward.
Nice.
So, that is my update, and I'm hoping to bring you the finalized copy before the meeting next month.
When's the last time to get the comments? I'm typing mine.
Sure, I would appreciate if you could get those to me by next week.
I would be so for that.
Yep.
The grants that are dealing with this parks and recreation, will they be matching grants?
There's all kinds.
All kinds?
There's matching, there's straightforward, non-matching, the grant, the implementation grant that they are proposing, that we could use, is a 50-50 grant, but we can also use other funding and other grant funding to cover our 50%, sometimes you can use matching. That grant specifically would just be a cash match of 50%, up to $20,000. It does not mean you have to do it, it just means we are then eligible for it.
Then it becomes our decision.
I thought the report was really well done, and it was very comprehensive.
When I said value-laden, you have gotten a document here that is probably double to three times of what we had actually paid for. Some of the things in here, just these, you may think, oh, it's a couple pages of drawings, we're looking at $10,000 to $20,000 for those kind of drawings to be put forth and have at our disposal. We basically have mini master plans for several of our parks. Those were some things that when we put out the RFP, we added in there, hoping that a group would kind of bite on that. We were fortunate enough to find a vendor who did, they're very excited about the area, I think you kind of heard their passion as they made their presentations, especially some of our conservation lands, along with our in-town parks. It's been a very positive experience, I know it's been long, but we're kind of winding down here and getting ready to finish up.
I would just add that the Recreation Board was very supportive of the plan and thought it was very well done. They did a great job.
Yeah, I was impressed, I was really impressed.
If you have any doubt what the Recreation Director will do, I think there's work there for that person for the next five to 10 years.
Well, you were our...
Very strategic.
You were our council representative, right, Bar?
Very strategic.
Yeah, you did a good, thank you, you did a great job.
The only other thing I would mention is that we did have some good public comment at the Rec Board, and there was a request to have the draft become public, so we'll have to have a discussion of that, and whether we can post this online at this point, or if it has to get that DCNR approval first, before we go ahead then and put that out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we need a motion?
A motion.
Second.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Brings us to item 12, any reports of council members, council committees, or other public bodies, as well as the committee chair reports?
I would just make a comment under public safety, the previous, as you recall, the previous public safety chair was Chris Lockard, and when he passed away, we discussed an appropriate recognition for him and for his work, and it was decided to take the proclamation that the mayor did and frame it, and I did, I was asked to get a frame, and I got a frame of this over here, and I will get the, the cost is from the council members, I will get the cost to Margie, maybe Margie just sort of send out what a suggested contribution might be to pay for the framing. It was not cheap, but it's very well done, it really looks nice, and we're hanging the Fire Museum, it's really nice. Thank you.
Doctor Up, thank you very, very much for doing that.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Because Chris was highly regarded by all of us. Okay, any management reports? Correspondence and information?
Under correspondence and information, I would just add that the Hanover High School kids will be painting the windows on Monday and Tuesday of next week, and the, we have on here the parade, the Christmas lighting is the 25th at 6:00 PM downtown.
Then there's the Santa Parade, I was, it was brought to my attention, it used to be at 7:00, and now it's at 9:00, but it says here 8:30, so I don't...
Starts at 8:30.